It's a weird retirement town is what it might be.
It is one of my favorite places.
Yeah, it is. It's a beautiful place up there.
Just look at that little clock in the back and we're going, you can't see it.
That's for a lot of people.
It took you a while to figure that one out?
I don't think that one's accurate.
I didn't see that one up there until the last meeting.
You thought maybe it was all ahead of him for good hindsight?
Yeah.
Why would I else not get eyesight? I can't see that clock.
Now it's, it's a clock.
Yes, it's the same one.
It's right up there. Oh, I like that clock.
I just don't know why they hung this up so high.
It's a special clock of some kind. Oh, I have no idea.
There's a plaque under it.
Yeah, explains it. Oh, that clock. I was talking about that one.
No, the clock in the back.
I don't think I've ever looked at that one.
Yeah, well, they put good ceilings there. Get people right there if they've got a older.
Yeah. All right, it's six o'clock and we'll go ahead and start this work session. The discussion on budget 101 and I'll pass it over to city manager Tom Sarvey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Tonight, we begin our journey of the budget tonight. As also have gone through this before, this is quite a journey that starts tonight and it'll end June 9th when we do the third and final reading of the budget. So up till then, there'll be a lot of discussion. We got to make sure we get a lot of stuff included and kind of balance things out. So tonight for our work session, I've put together a PowerPoint that will, that will start us in the direction of the budget just to get some basic understanding of what we are about to embark upon. And then if we have time tonight, I do have the general fund revenues, projections for this year and kind of how I arrived at those. Please know that these are discussion items and I don't expect to touch upon and discuss everything within this packet. More so, I want you to know that it's in there if you need to reference it or to go through and read it yourself. So we're just going to touch on some high level items. We're not going to get into like a lot of it, but you have it so that if you have questions on it or reference it, I am more than happy to dive into those different areas that you would have. I did bring our budget basher tonight, so I don't know if one of you want that to keep me in line or the budget in line, but that was, that was given to me as to keep the budget process in line. All right, so we always start our, our budget talks with what the city believes overall so that as we get into our talks about what's important to council, what's important to staff, we always tie it back to our, our vision, our mission and our culture statement. So whenever we have these discussions or different items, I always like to read this so that we always keep this in mind about why we're here and why we are discussing the overall budget. So our vision statement currently reads, Rollins is a unique and vibrant city where genuine resilient residents enjoy living in an appealing, safe and welcoming community filled with boundless opportunities. So with our overall budget, that is our, our vision. Our mission statement is the city of Rollins is dedicated to building public trust by providing exceptional services in a professional, safe, transparent and fiscally responsible manner. So all the decisions that we make need to be in alignment with that. Our culture statement says our happiness and success depends on building and maintaining relationships of trust with one another. Trust cannot exist without compassion, competence and integrity. So those are the three things that we aim for within our budget. So the first or the second slide, I wanted to review what, what we have been tasked with in the past from council is to present to council a balanced budget. So what is a balanced budget? What is, what are we aiming for? And from the definition that I have here, it is where our expected revenues equal our expected expenditures. So in, in theory, if we live up 100% to that, our overall financial position a year from now would be the same as it is today. What we bring in is what we would, we would have out. So if there is future planning, you'd want that part of the budget to direct those items towards the future, future planning. So our goal at the end of this is to have a balanced budget within the general fund, within the enterprise funds and in our capital projects funds. The next slide is just a brief overview of our financial structure of our city. So from a very broad perspective, we have two types of funds. We have governmental funds and we have proprietary funds. Within our governmental funds, the focus in there is cash flow. It's our, the flow of resources in and the flow of the resources out. And it's just on a cash basis. So within our governmental funds, we have a general fund and we have a specific purpose fund, which is the six penny tax that we have. So under the general fund, we have all the departments within the general fund. We have our housing funds are in there and that includes the dangerous building fund. We have an economic development fund and then we also receive impact assistance funds off of the construction projects throughout Carbon County. So we do separate those into different funds, but for auditing purposes, they're all rolled together into the general fund. The specific purpose funds is the six penny funds. We have the issue from 2019 and then we also have funds in two previous issues of six penny. And there's only about 35,001 and about 50,000 in the other. But, but, but those funds would have to be spent on whatever was on the ballot at the time that those were established. Then we have four different proprietary funds and the focus on the enterprise funds is not so much the cash flow in and out as it is the accrual basis of accounting. We recognize accounting events as they occur rather than as the cash flow catches up to them. So we have the water, the sewer, landfill, recycling. And then also as a proprietary fund, we have an internal service fund, which is the self-insurance, which is health insurance in there. So within that, our goal is to present a balanced budget in all of these different areas. I wanted to share with you here a little bit, our budget within the general fund. We have five different areas of our general fund budget. So we have probably 25 different departments throughout the city that include the city council department, IT, HR, police and all of those. All of those fall within the categories under the expenditures. So the general government, public safety, public works, highways and streets, culture and recreation. So the original budget there is the accumulation of all of the departments that fall under those categories. So the, the way that we have operated in the past is that once the original budget is established, we as staff can move budget in between or, or within those categories. So if under public safety, the police department has extra budget and 911 dispatch needs budget, staff in the past has been able to move the budget from one to the other. If staff needs to move money from general government to public safety, we would have to come before council and ask for a official budget transfer. And if we over expand these, we have to come for an official budget amendment to add to it through council. So, so that's kind of where we, we have that today. And as you can see from 24, we had significant amounts of, of budget to the right in there that, that was within the budget, but was not spent. So anyway, I wanted to share that with you. The next slide is very small. I apologize for that. But within those categories from that financial statement, you can see the different departments that add up into those budget categories. So general government includes those departments under there, public safety, public works, highways and streets. So that you could see the different areas that roll up into there as far as the departments that we have. Okay, I want to share with you right now essentially the budget status of where we're at. So this is our starting point with our general fund. And we will go through all of these different items at one point or another. So fiscal year 25 that we're in, you, you can see there that the revenues equal the expenditures, that the net is zero. We had a balanced budget. In fiscal year 26, what we currently have in there is a budgeted revenue of 12.8 million. And under the expenditures, those are net of capital. We do not have capital added in there yet. So we come up with a surplus from there of about 572,000 right now. So as we have discussions rolling forward, I will always refer back to these numbers with the changes that we talk about so that you could see from tonight's discussion exactly what has changed to where we are at that time. Okay, so, so these are the starting numbers. If you add in 1.5 million for capital and if you were to add in a million dollars for the streets program, you would see that our expenses over our budget, budget revenue essentially reached $2 million so that we would be upside down if we were to fund capital at 1.5 million in the streets. If we don't find either one of those, we would essentially have a surplus of 572,000. And then we would have other items through council that we would add to this budget would also have to add into that bottom line that we'd either have to cut somewhere or do something with our revenue. So I would say right off that we are about 2 million upside down right now as we start. We can look at it that we're 572 to the good. So it's, it's the perspective right now, but the reason that I picked 1.5 million in capital and I have a slide further down in here is our depreciation expense within the general fund is 1.5 million. That's what we recognize in depreciation expense. And with that being said, if we are to replace capital when they reach the end of life, we would have to either expand towards that capital or have saved one and a half million dollars a year just to maintain where our capital currently is. Because it reaches end of life and then if we don't have the funds to repurchase it, we're even in a larger hole to, to try to find that. Okay, the, the next couple of slides and I'm going through here quickly, I know. I wanted to talk a little bit with you in general about the employee benefits that we offer and where they are affected budget wise right now, kind of where we're at with our, our benefits. So the main three benefits that we offer are employees or above. It's the health insurance, Wyoming retirement system and then workers comp. Those are the main ones that the city picks up. And then there's some sub ones off of there in health insurance. We have vision and dental, you know, you know, different things. But, but those are the main categories that we have. So under the next slide there, we have one change in the Wyoming retirement system rates that we pay. And, and that change is going to be within the law enforcement pension. So Wyoming retirement for us has three different plans that, that we're in. One is the law enforcement, the second is the fire pension and then we have the regular, which is everyone else through the city. And so the law enforcement one, the current year that we're in, we withhold 9.5% out of the employee's check that goes towards Wyoming retirement and then the city matches that. So it is a total of 19% that goes to the state for a premium, but we split that in between what the employee pays and, and the employer pays. So as you can see for fiscal year 26, which would be 7/1/25 to 6/30 of 26, you can see that the rates for the employee and the employer goes up 0.9%. So we currently, within, within our budget, we would, we would split that so that the city's portion would increase 0.9 and the employee will have to pick up 0.9%. And then next year, it increases one more time by 0.9 and it eventually settles at 11.3% for both the employee and for the city for a total of 22.6%. You can see that the city increase down below is estimated at 17,178 for that increase that we have within the, the budget. And currently, the, and I, I don't know what the, I'd have to look on the fire pension. The 15.225% is the amount that the city picks up on the fire. I, I do not know what the employee has to, has to pay on that. I will, I will find that. I know on the regular one, it is split 50/50. So the employee pays 9.87 and the city pays 9.87 and that remains the same. The only one that has changed is the police pension.
The increase for law enforcement, is that something the state decides?
That's true. That comes through the Wyoming retirement system. Now, now just so council knows is the Wyoming retirement system puts out recommendations as to who should have to pay what in, in between the two sides. But as, as long as we pay the total premium, we could always mix that, you know? Pick up the increase all as the city or you could push it out. So it isn't like the, the matching rates aren't set by state statute, but, but it is recommended that they're either split or river rap with the fire pension. So anyway, going forward with that, that is an option that those amounts can be, can be shifted to or from the city match. Okay. The next slide, last year, we changed our strategy of our health insurance. So up till last year, we were purely self-funded. And what that, that means is, is that the employees pay a premium, the city would match that premium and all those funds would go into a bank account. And then we would determine the claims, what's eligible for claims, what we'd pay. We had full control of the claims portion of that. And for many years, that, that really worked for the city because our claims were low and we were able to build up a pretty good reserve in that health insurance. Last year in fiscal year 24, that changed and our claims really took off. And if we would have stayed self-insured, we would have had to have paid all of those claims ourselves through our cash reserves. So what we did strategy wise last year is, is we decided to go with a trust, a health insurance trust that set the plans. We paid the premiums to, to them and then out of the trust that they pay all the claims and then at the end of the day, they set the rates for us. Okay, so there's fully insured. If, if you were to, to go to Blue Cross, Blue Shield and just purchase a health insurance plan, that would be fully insured. We were totally self-insured where we were paying it all. What we have is still considered self-insured because it's part of the trust, but it acts as if it is fully insured. So they pick up all the premiums or all of the claims. They take ours and then like I said, they set the rates. And so the information I received at our renewal from the Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust is from August 1st through December 2024, we paid into the trust $592,000 of premiums. And the actual claims that were paid was 653,000. And, and then we have what they call incurred, but not reported. And this is referred to as IBNR that you'll see a lot of places. These are the ones where it, where the, the medical service was provided before December 31st, but not reported to the insurance to be included in the claims. And they have to estimate that. And if you add that estimate in, our total claims incurred were about 816,000, which amounts to about 224,000 is our claims over our, our premium. So if we were still self-insured, that 224,000 would come right out of our cash reserve to, to, to cover those claims. Being part of the trust, that they've got higher interest yields and they've, you know, when you combine health insurances, the administrative costs get spread a lot more. There's a lot of, a lot of benefits, but we received a 9% increase from the W EBT on our premiums. And if we were to cover this, it would be a 38% increase to us. So at, at this point, making the change over to the trust has been very beneficial to us right now because of the high claims that, that we have. And like I said, this was as of December. We've been watching the overall claims and that amount has continued to grow throughout the winter months into the early spring.
Well, don't this also eliminate a lot of our manpower? If we was doing our own, we had to do all of the, we're keeping that. We had to have people to be able to do all that where they're doing all of that.
Yes.
Everything else. We save money there too.
We are and, and those are part of, of the administrative cost because we hired that out. And so yes, all of that gets spread out over a much larger group and those costs really come down. Yeah, so right now, this was a very beneficial move for us and we really should have had closer to a 38% increase and it was capped at none. and we really should have had closer to a thirty-eight percent increase, and it was capped at nine. On the 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 next slide, this is just a informational slide for council. In the upper left-hand corner, those are the rates, the current rates, and then the renewal rates are those that are increased by nine percent. So you can see what the rates are that we have to pay. Those are monthly. And what our strategy is currently throughout the the city is the organization pays the premium under the twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible plan. Okay, so if you go to the renewal rates under twenty-five-hundred for a single, eight hundred and eighty-six a month, currently, the city picks up that entire premium for that. As you can see, if you move to the right, to the thirty-five-hundred high deductible plan, it's only eight hundred and thirty-eight, which is less than the amount for the twenty-five-hundred. We currently put that difference into a health savings account for that employee. And if you move to the left, to the fifteen-hundred, you can you can see that that there's an increase. We have the employee make up that difference if they want that higher plan. So currently, we cover the twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible plan so that if employees choose that, their premium is fully covered, that that they do not have to take additional amounts out of their check as a premium. If you look at the at the graph right below that on the left side, this is our current headcount as to um by by fund as to um how many um how many uh health insurance plans that we have. So we currently have eighty-five individuals. I think the point oh four is rounding in our our system. But it will be odd odd numbers within like the general fund because we have people that work within the general fund that also have time allocated to like the enterprise funds. Um, but you can you can see that we currently have eighty-five people on our plan, and you could see twenty-nine of those are single, fifteen employee with child, nineteen employee with spouse, and we have roughly twenty-two family plans. The premiums are to the right as to how much we pay. In the upper upper right, we pay one point six million, one point six eight eight million currently in health insurance premiums that the city picks up throughout those those different funds. And the graph right below that calculates what the increase is from the nine percent. And you can see there that the overall increase is about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand that we need to add in to our general fund to maintain our current strategy with how we allocate the health insurance. Uh, one thing that I always like to show council is the financial position of all these funds that we have. So you will be able to see this throughout all of the different funds, but what you see right now is what we call our internal service fund. It is a proprietary fund, and and this is where, up till last year, all of the health insurance was accounted for within our internal service fund. Now that we are with the trust, it's all going to shift over to the general fund, and and all of the all of these funds remain essentially in the internal service fund. Now, all of these funds that you see here can be used to help cover health insurance costs. They're they're not lost to the city because they're in this unique fund, but we can transfer amounts out of here to the general fund to pick up health insurance costs. In, I think it was two thousand eighteen, the the city within this was 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 almost in a deficit position, and a large transfer from the general fund and the enterprise funds was made into the internal service fund to boost the cash reserves. So up till then, claims were higher than premiums, and 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 we were headed into a deficit position. But you could see the five years up there that that turned around for a period of time, and our net position went from about three point nine million to four point three million. So it actually increased a little bit there. The next slide is essentially a profit-loss on the health insurance fund. And um you can see the change in net position, which is down a little bit more. You can see in two thousand twenty that we had four hundred and thirty-two thousand change in net position. We had more premiums going in than we had claims going out. So that went right into our uh net position. And you can see in twenty-one that that dropped to almost a break-even point. It was fifty thousand. The premiums decreased the next couple of years, but then we get to June twenty twenty-four, and you can see that it really turned, that our claims really overshot our uh premiums to about three hundred and thirty-four thousand. And I believe, from what I've seen, that we 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 are headed into those waters where we're going to have more claims than premiums for the next couple of years. So so I feel being part of that trust is really beneficial right now to our our fund here. Uh, but we still have four point three million in net position that we can use as a rate stabilization fund to help us on those increases as long as, over time, we make some subtle changes in there so that we don't get caught when all of this runs out. And then, you know, we have the high premiums, we have to pass it on. So so we will use this essentially as a rate stabilization fund for those rates.
We can, we got that tied up in high interest.
Right now, that is in Y O star, which is about four percent.
So we're making good money on our money besides just having to do nothing.
And I'm I'm hoping that with a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of increase, I'm hoping that the that the interest alone will will cover that for the next year, and we don't have to dip into uh principal on that. So the next slide is 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 just the actual numbers. Depending on which plan the individual takes, you can see the monthly HSA there on the thirty-five-hundred. That goes into an HSA for employees if they choose that. And then the one below shows what they would have to have to take out of their checks for the fifteen-hundred. The twenty-five-hundred plan had zeros, and so it's just even if that's what they select.
Does the HSA have to be used within the year?
No, the HSAs that we have can actually be held till retirement. And if you get to a certain age, that can even be rolled into like your retirement planning. Um, I I've known individuals that had eighty to a hundred thousand dollars in their HSAs. Yeah, I I wish we could put more in, to be honest, because I think that's a very good thing. And it's tax-exempt, and I really think, over time, that is something that we can look at. Um, a couple of things on our benefits that I don't have in here, but I would would like to explore would be a uh like a um employee assistance program, you know, for like mental health and like a uh like.
Wellness program?
What's that?
A wellness program?
That's what I was trying to say. I couldn't come up with it. It's a wellness program. Usually, those are associated with the premium holidays. But where if you select the middle plan, we don't have those premiums. It's kind of hard to to do that, but we could always work something out maybe to where amounts go into an HSA if they're able to successfully enroll and show progress within a wellness program. Um, so our general fund balance sheet is what I have up in in front of you right now. This is our general fund, which includes impact assistance, the dangerous buildings, the housing, the economic development fund, and the general fund itself, where recreation is included in this. And what I want to show is that our fund balance here over the last five years has has really increased. Um, the reason for this increase, it's it's interesting because in fiscal year twenty twenty, we had in fund balance about seventeen point two million dollars in there. In fiscal year twenty-one, we had the choke cherry Sierra Madre projects in which our sales tax revenue really increased a bunch in there. And that spilled over into fiscal year twenty twenty-two before in twenty twenty-three, it all dissipated. And we actually suffered a loss in fiscal year twenty twenty-two to where our expenditures increased because of the rise in revenue. Revenue dropped, and and we got caught in there to where we had more expenditures with that. So we we've taken a lot of um strategy to cut the expenditures back from that time. And I will show you that we are in a fairly good place right now, at at least with our old fund balance. Um, people will see twenty-seven twenty-seven point seven million in fund balance, and they're going to say, and you've got budget problems. Yeah, we can account for all twenty-seven million, and we need about ten more to 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 be where we really need to be. So those are large numbers, but they are utilized in different areas of strategy within the city. Uh, one other thing that I'd like to point out on the balance sheet is under receivables, assets receivables, there's an inter-fund advances. And the current balance for that is one point nine million. I think I have those backwards with the leases. It should be one point one two million under the inter-funded advances. And what that is, is um a couple of years ago, we did phase one of the Sage Creek Springs. And to pay for that, we had an ARPA grant, and then we also borrowed eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the general fund to help pay for that. And within that advance, I believe we had five years to pay that back. And we are getting closer to that five years to where we would have to make a determination as to how to satisfy that uh advance. And then we we currently have three hundred and nine thousand dollars in advance to the sewer fund when we had an incident at the wastewater treatment plant that where it flooded, and we had to buy new equipment and different things. The sewer fund did not have those resources at that time, so the general fund advanced that to them. So if you see the advances, that's what that is. The next slide is just the notes from that that I've shared with you. Um, uh, yeah, so that's just the those those same notes with the advances. If you go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about capital with you within the general fund. So our general fund as of June twenty twenty-four, capital assets total forty-three million dollars. And you can see that's land, buildings and improvements, infrastructure, furniture, and equipment. And then the line below that is our accumulated depreciation. And what that essentially is, is an estimate of the useful life of those assets that that has been exhausted. Okay, so if we were to value our assets today, we would say that we have twenty-one point three million in value, even though the historical cost was forty-three million. So the accumulated depreciation is such an important number because if we had to replace those assets today on a historical cost, it would cost us twenty-one point seven million dollars to have those replaced. So what you would always want to do is make sure that we have funded depreciation saved so when those assets are at end of life, you're able to replace them through funded depreciation. Uh, and so what what when we talk about cash reserves and a policy, we we need to take that into into mind. Currently, we expense one point five million dollars a year. And so just as a rule of 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 thumb, you would want to either expand one point five million, which is the current depreciation expense, on replacement capital on the items that are on the depreciation schedule, or you would want to put that into a savings plan, which which we would call funded depreciation to ensure that when those assets hit end of life, that we have that money to to be replaced. The large number on here under disposals, the one point four million, is we changed our capitalization threshold from one thousand dollars to be eligible to go onto our fixed assets to ten thousand dollars. And so everything that was depreciated out, that was less than ten thousand dollars, was removed from our depreciation schedule. And as you can see, that total of one point four million that we believe should should be expended as purchased and come out of operating budgets rather than capital budgets. So um, so I just wanted to share that with you. The next slide is more for council's information. It's going to be the revenues and expenses within the general fund. And this came right out of our audit reports that we have. So so this is this is audited. Um, you can see the net change in fund balances, the third line from the bottom. The first two years, we were able to bank almost fifteen million dollars off of the choke cherry Sierra Madre projects. And then you can see in fiscal year twenty twenty-two that our expenditures picked up with that wave. We had the cash, so it was spent. You can see we lost about three million dollars in twenty twenty-two as a result of that wave. In twenty twenty-three, we really cut back within general government. and in the capital outlay, and we brought it back to one million. And then this last fiscal year, it was two point seven million. A lot of that was increases in revenue, and we have cut the expenditures back to be more in line with those revenues. And so our goal with the budget is going to be to have our revenues and our expenditures be the same number at the end of the year. That's our goal. Whatever we bring in, we expand. And if we do our jobs correctly and if department heads do their jobs correctly, the net change in fund balance at the end of 2026 should be zero. Revenues should equal expenditures. But we know revenues increase, decrease, expenditures do, so you never hit zero. We do have the possibility, moving forward with the TransWest project, the wind turbines and everything, we have the possibility that our revenues can parallel, if not exceed, the amounts received in fiscal year 2021, which would be up to council at that point if that materializes to do more projects, to bank the money, do something. My only advice is, is that you ride the wave and eventually those projects complete and you have to come back to a baseline as far as your operating expenditures. And if your expenditures go up with that wave and the revenue five, six years from now drops, you're going to be back in a deficit position. And that's hard to get back home. So it just, as I said, takes some strategic planning and different things to make sure that we keep everything in perspective and within the right place. You can see on the next page, I graphed to the left our revenues and expenditures. So you can kind of see how they increased, decreased over time. 2022, you could see where the revenues broke twenty million. And then they went back to about ten and the expenditures really started to climb with the increase. And in 2022, we were about three million dollars upside down. But expenditures have come down and revenue has increased from that point to bring us to where we are today. Okay, so I want to get into a little bit of our budget numbers now. That kind of sets the overall stage for where we're at now. So the first set of numbers that I want to go over with you is our revenue. So I will share with you our revenue projections, how we arrived at these. And then on April 7th and April 10th, we will look at the expenditure side of this. We'll get into the expenditures. But tonight, I would like for you to see kind of where we're at revenue-wise and what our projections are. The main tool for this is what we call the Craig Report. And I have a couple of copies of this if somebody would like to read. What happens within the Craig Report is a group of economists come together a couple of times a year and they project what the state revenues will be. So they look at oil and gas, they look at sales tax, they look at the interest. They look at the overall revenue picture of the state and they report to the governor what their findings are. We're able to use some of this information because as far as mineral taxes, severance taxes, we get those from the state. So they will parallel what they have. Our sales tax is our number one source of revenue. And I will show you a slide in here. We have not paralleled the state at all on our sales tax. It's like, you know, it's like a steady increase in ours. It's like clear up and clear down and we kind of cross their projections every two or three years. But I still like to use their numbers that they have overall. And here again, this is what we have just come up with. This is the current status of this report. Please feel free to question the numbers on here or whatever because at the end of the day, this is the council's budget. We're just putting together what we feel our recommendations are. So as far as the mineral severance, mineral royalty tax, we have a one percent increase from what we received. And again, that comes right out of the Craig Report, that they believe that that'll increase one percent. Under other taxes, currently, we feel that the county motor vehicle tax that we get when you register your vehicle at the county, we do not see any reason right now to increase that estimate. You can see in February 25, those are the actual numbers through February. We feel that we are on track with that. Cigarette tax over time has dropped every year. It's just less and less cigarette tax. So we have decreased our estimate by six point five eight percent on that. The large ones that we have is our sales use tax, county option sales tax, state use tax, county option use tax, and the state use tax out of state, sales tax out of state. That is the bulk of our revenue that we receive from the city or from the state. And we feel that our current inflow of those sales tax is right within line with our estimate for fiscal year 25. We feel that we're right in line. In fact, at the end of January, budget-wise, on probably seven to eight million dollars, we're within twenty thousand dollars of our estimate. So I mean, we're really close. So what we have done is through the Craig Report suggests a three percent increase statewide in the sales tax, use tax. So we use that from our previous year budget, fiscal year 25 budget. We increased it three percent. Here again, this all depends upon wind farm activity, construction projects in Carbon County. We could see those numbers double or even triple what they are. Or we can see all the activity leave the county and we can see those numbers drop. So our estimates are based off of where we're currently at and the suggestions from the Craig Report, so we increase those three percent. The state supplemental funding is on a biennium from the state, so we kept that. The same lodgers tax is one of those taxes that has skyrocketed honestly in the last few years. We get two percent off of that. The two percent optional tax, five percent goes to the state. But we have really increased, as you can see, our fiscal year 25 estimate was thirty six thousand. We're at fifty eight thousand currently at the end of February. So we increased that significantly. County ad lorum taxes, the property tax, as we've all followed through the legislative session. There was property tax relief granted by the legislature and the governor signed that, reducing the property taxes by twenty five percent. And there was no backfill on that. So in other words, it was cut and we're not going to get anything from the state to help us make that up. We just have to adjust for that decrease. Now, the hard part with our property taxes is it is on a cash flow basis. So what is assessed by the county is the timing of which that comes in off the assessed valuation. So some years, like in fiscal year 24, you can see the amount was six hundred and sixty thousand. That was just a timing of when the city received that from the county and the county received that from the taxpayer. So we're not always at the six hundred and sixty thousand. So we have reduced that twenty eight percent, which there was like three percent timing in there. And we reduced that by the twenty five percent that was reduced by the legislature. Franchise fees rounds out the taxes. We have left those alone, just as they were. We feel that we are on track to receive the amounts. There are some new franchise agreements that we are looking at with Union Telephone and some of those. If they come about, we can increase that by those estimates that we have on those franchise. But overall, taxes and assessments, we're estimating it at ten million, nine hundred thousand. That is the lion's share of our revenue, and that's kind of how we arrived at it. The next slide, I just put in information about the tax relief, property tax relief from the state legislature. And I believe there's an estimate down below. You can see that throughout the years where property tax increased, decreased. And you can see a lot of that is timing, although there is an increase. We took a five-year average and we reduced that by twenty five percent. And so it came out to twenty eight percent, but that's just because of the average to take the timing out. Franchise fees are the next slide, just so you know where we get those from in the last few years worth of activity. The next slide is a very interesting slide and the state sends us out quarterly. So you can see the map of the state of Wyoming to the left and they have all the counties listed. And they share with you what the taxable sales are within those counties, if they go up or down from that quarter through a year ago. So it would be like the fourth quarter of '23 through the fourth quarter of '24. You can see taxable sales per county if they've gone up or down. And Hot Springs County up here is up a hundred and ninety percent. So obviously, they've got some projects happening up around the thermopless area that are sizable, which are about two times their normal sales that they have up there. Off to the right of that is a graph and I went back and I pulled the numbers for the last year. You can see Carbon County highlighted there. We had in fiscal year 22, 23, we had a lot of wind farm revenue. So it increased it. And then when that stopped, we had a twenty eight percent decrease countywide in our sales. And you can see then throughout the last year, we've crawled out of that hole. We were, I believe, we were the largest in there that had decreased at that time. And we are back to a positive, like there is more sales either through commercial or through projects, people with sales tax. So we are headed back in the right direction with that. I wanted to share with you real quick the January 25 Craig Report from the state. This isn't really, this affects us somewhat. But they adjusted their estimates from October of 2024 through January. They estimated those downwards under the mineral severance tax because the price of oil dropped. In there, federal mineral royalties, they dropped and then investment income, they increased. So from a state level, they have decreased their estimates. The next slide is one that you can look at in your own time. On the left is directly out of the Craig Report. This is the sales use tax, severance tax, the actuals for all those years, if they increased, decreased. And then they come down to 2025 down there. And then 2026, you will see there's a three percent increase. That's what I used on the sales tax for us. It comes right off of that. To the right is a very interesting graph that I find interesting because to the right is our actual sales tax in Carbon County. And you can see in fiscal year 19, 20, 21, we had huge increases because of the wind farm activity. And then in 2022, when that ceased, we lost it all in about one day, one year. We lost that. And then in '23, it bounced. But then in '24, you saw on the other is where it decreased significantly. And so I put in the amounts that tie back to the revenue numbers here for 2026. I used the three percent from the state again. The next slide is just a continuation of that where I talk about the sales tax and how we estimate that. The fiscal year 2025 estimates, we come in where we were last year at that time within twenty thousand dollars. So we feel that we are in line with our budget. Just some more information on that in the severance. And then real quick, we're low on time. I discussed basically the other sources of taxes like the cigarette tax. You're able to see on the graph right there, you can see the steady decline in the amount of cigarette tax. And to the right, you have the actual numbers that we pulled right off of the general ledger. So how these work for these next seven or eight slides is we have the amounts received, the increase or decrease, and then the bottom line is our fiscal year 2026 estimates, where we set those so that you could see what's happening above it. It's right in line. So we're estimating thirty five thousand, five hundred, a two point seven percent decrease. And up above is how it is calculated, if you're interested to know how that is calculated. Auto taxes, you can see the graph there again. Those are from the county on the registration fees of that. And there is some timing within that, but you can see how we estimated that. The next slide is the lodging tax. And you can see how in '22, it started to increase into '23 and then it really took off in '24. So you can see that we've estimated that at seventy thousand. From where that has been, that may be a little low even, kind of a conservative estimate there based on what we've received. estimate there, based on what we've received. Through February, we received 58,000, and that would be eight out of the 12 months, so I think we will surpass that. We just get a little nervous to ride that wave too high. If we estimate it too high and something happens and we're caught. Gasoline tax, this comes when we purchase gas through the state, and we get, we get these funds from the state to help us basically with our transportation department. We've estimated those right where they basically were in there. We don't see a real change in that. If the price of gasoline rises, obviously, this will rise. We can always look at a mid-year adjustment if we need to on that. A couple other revenues outside of taxes. We have licenses and permits, and you can see the different licenses that we collect fees on and the permits, and you can, you can see our estimates on that. Our liquor license, we increased the rate in fiscal year '25 of those significantly, so you can see the increase. Animal licenses, we kept the same contractor. You can see a lot of these. We looked at the actual amounts received, and we decided a lot of those to keep the same. We, we do believe that our engineering building permits, that we increased that too significantly in '25. We did not reach the 62,000, and we are lagging so far in February, but spring would be the time that a lot of those will pick up on the, the building permits, but we, we did bring that down 20%. Special use permits and Correl permits for the Glen Edition, we've, we've kept those identical, and that's just the number of lots multiplied by the rate, as if all of them have animals. Not all of them have animals on it, so they don't have to, to pay this. But you can see that we kept those the same. The next one is charges for services. You can see the, the different fees to the left again, where we are proposing those and the change. The street cuts, we believe, will increase because of the new rate structure on a street cut. The other one down is asphalt. We increased that as a result of the street cuts, and even though it's a 200%, 160% increase, it amounts to about $9,000. So all those, but you can see the charges for services there. The next slide is the police and the courts. This would be all of the citations, the 911 surcharge. It would be all those, those different items that we receive on our public safety. We, we feel under the restitution that those previous amounts were accounting errors because the city, sometimes if, if somebody has to pay restitution, we just forward that to them, and that's not our revenue. But somehow, years passed, some of that ended up in, within revenue, so we wrote that out, hoping that that can be corrected. We've increased the municipal judge, which is the collection of the police citations that they write, that that come in through the court. We've increased that 12%, hoping that as we bring officers in and the, you know, different We do not use quotas there whatsoever. I want to make that very clear. With, with the officer, you just still their judgment, whether to issue a citation or not. There is no undue pressure to write citations. I just want to make that clear, that it's within their judgment, but we budget that still. We have to put a number out there as a budget. The cats bus, we have increased the rate on that, so we increased the overall budget, and you can see through February that we are roughly holding up to that. The, the advocate grants that we get through the state and through the feds each year are dropping off those amounts. The resource officer reimbursement, the 75,000 there, is received from Carbon County School District, so that we could place a school resource officer at the middle school. They reimburse us 75,000 for that, and then you can, you can see the other revenues. Overall, there's a 4.77% increase that we expect through the police and the courts. The last slide is our, what we just call miscellaneous income. We are working right now diligently to increase the interest income. We've met with the banks. I have further meetings scheduled with them tomorrow, in fact. I believe I meet with R and B Bank, that they are sending up their chief executive officer out of Colorado to come up and talk to us about that. We are hoping that we can at least double, if not triple, this number by the time the final budget goes out. But right now, that's just consistent with, with where we're at, and you can see the amounts we receive probably aren't going to reach to that level. Lotteries for cities, we've increased 7%, and the real increase here is within our horse racing. That has really taken off and become a very steady source of, of revenue. We, we had budgeted the year that we're in, 80,000, and we're at 222,000 already. So we've increased that 187%. We maybe could increase that even a little bit more. That's maybe a conservative effort, but where there's no real history in that yet, I, I just want to remain conservative. But if council wants to do something there, like I said, I'm, I'm all ears as to what council would do.
Councilmember Sanger?
So in the horse racing category, doesn't the state have history, though, in this?
I believe the state does. We just started it three years ago. It was my first year.
I'm just curious what their, what their increases have been statewide.
That's true, and see if it matches ours.
And compare that to where we are currently.
I will do that. That's a good idea. I should be able to find that data. But, but, but that's an area that we've increased 150,000 in revenue there and some of those other areas. So, so with that, tonight, I hope that's a good start to our budget. I hope we get an understanding of our revenue side a little bit. I not only expect questions, but I am asking you guys to please ask questions with this. I am available anytime here on anything that is in here. Again, I, I didn't touch on everything, and the reason for that is, is I just wanted you to have this information so that you could, could go through and, and look at it. So our next meeting, we will dive into the expenditure side of things, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more questions into our strategy. Where we are currently at is I have met with department heads, and their ask, you know, through our discussion, is, is what I will present. So I will go through, look for some cuts in there, obviously. I just want to get through this with council so that I know what our priorities are and where we want to be. And then I will take that as my assignment to cut back in the areas that I can find with my staff to reach that. That is what I'm going to do. So what you will see may be a little bit high next time, but, you know, I want to know where we're at. Another critical piece of this will be strategic planning. So what we will bring Monday night to council is our operating budget. It's not going to have a lot of strategic planning, and I know I've, I've heard from all seven council people as to desires that you have for the project community, and, and it's, it is really exciting to hear because it just betters our community in every way. But, but there again, we, we need to look at the price tag of those things and our ability to perform that with the staffing that we have. And so towards the end of April, I have those dates, I'll, I will share in the, the meeting. We will do strategic planning, and the purpose of that now is we want to get that into the expenditure budget so that we know what to, you know, what, what we have to do with the operating budget to balance that out and what we can add this year. So strategic planning will be, will be at, at least one meeting, the end of April. Next week, we'll have two meetings. We'll break that up into two nights on the expenditure. And if we can come up with direction from that, we can end it there and we can work on it. We, we may need to, to get together in a work session to have council discuss and instruct on those areas that council would, would like to see with that. There may be one more after that. Last year, we went till, I think, we went till 2:00, I think, in one meeting, and we, we wanted to break that up this year into two different meetings and possibly three. So with that, I would entertain any questions or I'll turn it back to the mayor.
You guys have any questions for Tom at this time? I'm sure we're going to have lots.
No, and I, I ask for that, honestly. It, it is not a burden. I ask that you come in and discuss things.
Counsel, Vice Mayor Garner?
I just want to verify. On the general fund balance sheet, it shows 30 million in the, was left over at 2024? That's what's in the bank?
I'll have to look at that number. That seems high, but I don't think it's... On the, the balance sheet?
General fund balance sheet, yep. June, it says June 30th, 2024.
Oh, under the, the bottom right hand?
Yeah.
Yes. If you go up one line, the 27 million is our actual fund balance.
Okay, gotcha. That's the number.
So we have accounts payable, payroll expenses, non-spendable, it's about 27 million. And there again, I would like to bring to council very quickly a cash reserves policy that will speak to that fund balance number, because what, what the community will say is, if you have that much in there, why aren't we doing all of these other things? Why are you saying that we're upside down? When, when you look at emergency reserves, you look at funded depreciation, you look, you look at all the things that council has, you know, that, that would be cash reserves, we will learn that that is not sufficient for what, what we have. But when you see that number, it's going to be, wow, why are we having to pay water bills and why? But if you, you know, so like I said, I will get to, to council sooner than, than later a cash reserves policy, and council can set the priorities of, as far as an emergency reserve. How much do you want in emergency reserves? How much do you want in funded depreciation? How much do you want for deferred maintenance? And, and all of those, those different items.
Councilmember Sanger?
So the unassigned would become assigned, but they would be assigned to funded depreciation? They would be assigned to all of those categories? And what you would end up with is a reserve amount?
Correct.
And then everything else would be assigned?
Yes.
As to, this is where it's going to get spent?
Yes.
We, we run the same problem with the DDA. We, we show, we have all this money sitting here, but if you go back and look where that money actually goes, you have this much sitting here.
That's it.
You're trying to come up with more money.
Yeah, yeah, and you're like, whoa, we don't have that there.
Right.
But is that a, a large number? Yeah. I mean, I'm not gonna...
Yeah, it's just that it's unassigned, so you don't know where it's...
Really, really nowadays, a million dollars for a city is not a lot of money.
No, and our, our annual budget's about 12 million, so if you put 12 million, just one year, in emergency reserve, you've knocked that down to where your funded depreciations may be at 50%, which means that as things hit end of life, what, what do you do if you don't have those resources?
Vice Mayor?
That was going to be my next question. Would you recommend at least one year's reserve? Because if we pulled off, if we could pull this off, I was just looking at some numbers, the spring rehabilitation and the high-pressure transmission line, the total on that, minus what we have remaining, we would have about 14 million left over. And that would knock out the two biggest concerns on our transmission line coming into raw, our high-pressure transmission line plus the, the main line, which pulls us away from another March event that we had two, three years ago, because we had that guillotine leak the other day, or, you know, a month ago. Had we had any type of issues with the main line leading up to that as well, and our tanks were low, it would have been in, we, we can easily repeat the event if we don't get those taken care of. And with this much money left over, or in the bank, it's...
Yeah, but if...
Would that leave us with enough?
But if you look at the accumulated depreciation, if we have left over, it's at 21 million. So if you had to replace capital, if you put it in the transmission line, we are not able to replace capital as it becomes. So it's almost as broad as it is long right now, right?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be basically loan in the water department?
Yes.
Money you have to wait, pay the city back, talk to them.
So...
I know it sounds weird, but...
So under an enterprise fund, the intent of that is to cover its own costs. So whatever happens in there, that's how an enterprise fund works. Now, can you transfer money over for things? Yeah, you can, but you kind of run the risk of somebody saying that's not an enterprise fund anymore because you're using general fund money to do it.
I hate to cut discussion short, but some of us will probably need a break before the meeting starts at 7:30, so we'll conclude the workshop and start back at 7:30. Thank you.
This was the one that I was... You know, because you're going to have to hit it. Yes.
You might ask, Myra, because I noticed you were making notes. So if you're making, if you took the document on your site and made notes, it's fine. If you're making notes off of what...
But that's...
Is on here? They might be visible to everybody? The public? That is public. So, so you know, that might be visible to everybody or it might disappear. I don't know. But you might ask, Myra?
Oh, on, uh...
Like, yeah.
On board docs?
Yeah, so like if I go down here, the payroll, I go here. That is for everybody. So if I make a note here, I'm not sure if it would save it or make it available to everybody.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So what I did is I saved it as a PDF and then I was adding it from the PDF. Correct, yeah.
That's what you do.
Yeah.
I was just concerned if you were doing it on there.
Oh, no. Thank you.
Who knows if everybody can see that? Okay.
No, thank you though.
Yep.
Did everybody refresh?
All right, guys, it's 7:31. So we're going to call this meeting to order. Wait for Brooke to get back here. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynn, do, do roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Vice Mayor Darrell Garner. Councilmember Derek Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Lumen?
I move to approve the April 1st, 2025 city council agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the April 1st, 2025 city council agenda as presented. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Yes, online voting is open.
Yay. I'm not signed in.
Thank you. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to the approval of the consent agenda. Councilmember Singer?
I move to approve the consent agenda of April 1st, 2025 as presented.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda of April 1st, 2025. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
Okay, moving down to some public hearings. The first public hearing is an ordinance second reading and wave reading of the ordinance revising Chapter 8.16 of the Rawlins Municipal Code relating to nuance, nuances. That one was taking a hard time. Um, anybody here would like to comment on this public hearing? Hearing none, I will close that public hearing and move it on to item B. It's a public hearing of resolution authorizing the amendment of the City of Rawlins fee schedules, administrative fees, Appendix A, and recreation services fees. Golf course only, Appendix J. Is anybody here that would like to discuss this item? Okay, hearing none, I will close that public hearing and move on to item C, which is a public hearing for the resolution authorizing a budget amendment to fiscal year 2024 through 2025 municipal budget for expenditures to the City of Rawlins, Wyoming. Anybody here that would like to discuss this item? Okay, hearing none, I will close that public hearing. Moving on to citizens' participation, which is a time for public comment set aside by Resolution Number 2C, 1996. And it sets a time limit of public comment for five minutes under the agenda, item citizens' participation, with provision that five-minute time limit may be increased at the request of a member of the public or any council members subject to the vote of the council. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay. Moving down to board appointments and presentations. We have a proclamation tonight, um, and I think we have some representation. Would you guys like to come up and we, we can read the proclamation for you? All right. I'll read the proclamation, then you guys can comment whenever you need to. Um, so it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2025. Whereas sexual violence is a devastating and intolerable crime affecting men, women, and children of all races, ages, cultures, economic situations, and abilities. And whereas the National Violence Against Women Prevention Center estimates that one of five adult women has been forcibly raped at least once during her lifetime. And whereas sexual violence seriously affects our youth, with one out of every three girls and one out of every six boys being sexually assaulted before the age of 18. And whereas continued commitment is needed to ensure that all victims and survivors of sexual violence are treated with the dignity and respect they deserve and afford the support they need to heal. And whereas to prevent future violations of our citizens, we must foster greater public awareness of the causes and effects of sexual violence and commit to addressing this problem on every civic level. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, all must work together in eliminating perpetration of rape and sexual assault. And whereas Carbon County Cove requests public support and assistance as it works towards a society where all people can live in peace, free from violence and exploitation. And whereas the vision of ending sexual violence can be a reality. Now, therefore, I, Jacqueline R. Wells, Mayor of Rawlins, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In Rawlins, Wyoming, I urge all citizens to join together to prevent sexual assault. Thank you, guys. Do you guys have any comments?
Um, we just have a couple things. We just wanted to talk a little bit about what we have going on for the month of April. Um, we have today's kicks off Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Today is the Day of Action, Wear Till Day. I see someone's wearing a till. We all wear a till on. Rachel Berger with the Victim Witness Assistance Coordinator from the Police Department is standing with us in solidarity today, so we're happy to have her here. But we have a Clothesline Project Paint Night on April 16th at the Depot from 5:30 to 7:30. That will include us displaying the jeans and t-shirts that the community can paint. We will be displaying that at our other event. And that is the Let Yourself Glow Community Awareness Walk and the Glow in the Dark Egg Hunt that we're going to be having on the 18th. And that is at the Rec Center softball field from 7:00 to 10:00. And we're going to have glow gear, food, candy, prizes, music, food trucks. So, yeah, should be fun. I don't think anyone's ever going to go on the dark egg hunt, so we're excited. And then Denim Day is April 30th, and that's just to wear denim in support of Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you so, so much for all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to reports and information. The first one is the DDA and Hub reports. And I will invite Pam up to talk to us.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Um, okay, I've got lots on my sheet, but I'll try to get through it quickly. Um, the first thing is I just want to touch on, it's been out in a bit of advertising between SBDC, Small Business Development Center, and Rawlins DDMA Street, the hub. We are having a Start Your Own Business class. It's been on a couple media, it's been on NPR, it's actually been on PBS. I think we have 12 people signed up for this on Thursday night when I talked to Jim Drever today. So it starts at 5:30 to 7:00 this Thursday night. If you guys would like to come, it's not too late to sign up. He is going to go over other tools that businesses can use if you're an existing business. So yes, it is focused on an SYOB, Start Your Own Business. But if you feel like it, that will be at the hub at this point. We haven't moved it to the Depot East Room, but we're getting close on numbers. So, yeah, so that's the first thing. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the Ferguson Building. So, um, just want to kind of make sure, we talked about it a little bit last month. But this is a volunteer, so the Ferguson is owned by the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority. It was actually donated from the county commissioners. And right now we are doing some O and M, I think I said this last month, um, some maintenance work. The transom little, um, uh, pieces of glass were starting to fall out. We didn't want the liability from us or anybody. So that has completely been volunteer-driven. We've had three or four people up there working on that project, but it has been all volunteer-driven. And then also, um, the money that is being spent on, um, the transoms, taking them out, building, um, the frame around it, um, has all been done through fundraising. There has been no city funds. So, and we are, um, the board, a week and a half ago approved, um, the windows, the new transoms to be put in, even though there'll be a lot of work done on that building, and we're not sure. Once the feasibility study is completed at the end of this month, again, done on a grant that was, city or DDA didn't have to pay for, we will then forth-bring the feasibility study. We got some, um, Councilman, I'm so used to saying Commissioner today. Councilman Sanger and I sat in on a presentation with heirs and associates. They are doing the feasibility study and the brownfield study for us. Both studies didn't, they were all grant funds. But what will happen is we will put the transoms in probably in the next 30 days. But that will not, um, any money that we have spent will not be reworked or redone from the development plan. So the plan, the feasibility study, we will review it, the board will review it. And then, um, per the DDA statute, we, any development, not maintenance, not events, stuff like that, pure development has to come, um, forth to the council for your approval anytime, whether it was facade or rainbow teton or the splash pad, you guys always approve that. So same thing will happen per DDA statute. So we're excited. Probably it'll be after budgets and say, okay, what do we want to do? So the feasibility study, a couple of things that came out of it is we did ask them to look at the feasibility of putting apartments, condos that we could sell, owner occupied, or a hotel. And so when we met with them last week, two weeks ago, um, they were leaning more on apartments, higher-end, not higher-end apartments, but bigger apartments. But then I asked, I said, you know, we really were thinking about a hotel and we'd like to know because that is sales tax revenue when people check in and out of a hotel. It's a lodging tax, and they kind of said, oh, we didn't think about that component. So we really asked them, like, yes, they were saying, um, the studies are showing that we need more apartments. But then I said, oh, I kind of like that sales tax and, and lodging tax because that helps everybody. So they were going to work on that. We should have that finished report by the end of this month. The other thing, um, we wanted, I wanted to talk to you guys about tonight is DDA is really looking organically at the organization. We are going to be 35 years old in January as a DDA, as a downtown development entity. And that's super exciting. And we are against a statute-driven program. We are, we are an org, not a program, we are an organization through statute that was started, hoping 35 years. So we're kind of really looking organically at the future of the organization. We're taking a hard look at our operations, our programs, our services. We're evaluating. We're, I applaud the board. I mean, they are doing a deep dive. I mean, three years ago, we had two and a half staff. We, we were getting even before that, um, larger allocation of money. And, and we understand and we are just taking a hard look that there has to be some changes due to staffing, decrease in staffing, decreasing in funding, and our capacity. So we're really looking at, is Main Street the right way to go? Is, you know, which programs are going to work the best for us? So we are being transparent. So we are being transparent, we are making sure that we are really looking at the needs of the downtown merchants, we're looking at the needs of the property owners, and the needs of what the city needs from revenue, development, sales tax. So we're taking a hard look at that. And again, current funding and requirements from what we have to do as a statute-driven organization, what Main Street now, they have gone through some changes, the Wyoming Main Street Program. And we have come up with thoughts that there's more reporting, there's more, 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 and we're not, we're looking at the value of that program. So there's going to be some changes in the future with, with the downtown organization for the good, for, for the better, as I was saying, that, you know, we want to make sure that we are embarking on strategic thoughts and focusing on the development side and making sure we're directly being advantageous to the merchants. And that while we're looking at this deep dive, we have been super successful maximizing the Main Street approach. But is that the direction that we need to go as a city? Is that the need, we need to go for the merchants and the downtown? So lots of, lots of things. And bottom line is, what's the best ROI? We want more, we want to do things well, we want to have impact on buildings, because we are a downtown development, and we want more return on investment. So we have a lot. And we also will put out a public statement. I think Tom and I, I know budgets are coming up, so we want to have our ducks in a row. You know, we have, have really talked about, as any DDM Street in this, out of any organization in the state like ours in the downtown, we've done seven major development projects in a little over, almost twenty years, nineteen years. No other downtown has done that. We've done buildings, we've done streetscaping, and there have been other communities in the state that have done projects, but they haven't been the general contractor. And so we are very fortunate, because we have you guys' support, but we have a great group of volunteers, we have a great Board, and so we're just being very, very organic and looking at everything. So having said that, we are starting a new committee. It's called the Downtown Thrive. Every downtown merchant has been invited to next, and I'm just showing you guys, you guys could come as council, because you technically are a downtown merchant, but it's not, you know, it's open to the public, but we're really wanting to hear from the downtown merchants. But next Tuesday morning, we're starting Downtown Thrive, and it was created as a, as a committee to assist and support existing businesses through resources, tools, events, and marketing. So it starts at seven-thirty AM next Wednesday morning, but it's before the business is open. So, and then the other thing that we're doing organically, looking at this, is people have said, oh, we're not having Summer Fest anymore, we're not doing this, we're not doing that. We may not be doing that, but we're doing this. And what this is, and I mentioned this last month, too, is summer shenanigans. And so instead of doing all our eggs in one basket, you're out of town for the weekend, it takes six months to plan, we don't have as many partners. So again, we're working on summer shenanigans, June sixth, July eleventh, and August first, four, four PM on a Friday night till ten or eleven. Come in, we have lots of already people stepping up to do Cornhole as a fundraiser, to have the first event, we're going to have a Harpus that Rawlins Music Academy is partnering. So, and the key on these new events versus having one big event is, every component of these events will have, will have, every part of these will have a component that pushes the community and people into the businesses. And that's really, we want to ring cash registers. I mean, let's be honest, we want more sales tax with possible changes in property taxes and decreases in revenues, we want to increase sales tax. And so we really feel like the Volunteer Committee, the Mars Committee, and the EV Committee, they were two committees under the Main Street Approach, and we're combining them into Downtown Thrive. Super excited. Both committees are excited to come together and work together on economic vitality and events and say, what can we do and make it bigger and better? So that's the, kind of that whole transition and evolving. I just gave you guys lots of information, but we're super excited. This is a, a, a growing time for us, but it's also a time to reflect and make sure that we're on the right path for the next season of, and be ready for our thirty-fifth birthday. That's really cool.
Councilwoman Newman?
I have a question. The Ferguson Building and the tiles that they took down?
Hmm.
Their glass, correct?
Hmm.
What was done with them?
We are in the process of finding a buyer for those.
Because I, and this is nostalgia talking, but
Nope.
I know when the, like, the post offices, they removed the old dial ones, and then people made boxes or something.
Yeah.
And I know they're just like little squares like this. I don't know the cost it would be to make them into something that people could buy as a memento of old Rawlins.
I love that idea. So right now, we have reached out to a historic contractor. We actually, as a Board, as a Development Authority, looked into actually redoing. Now, I will bring pictures when we come to Council and show you the development plan. Those were not originally there. Those were put in. So when we originally looked at the Ferguson, they were all solid glass, much like what looks like across from Manong's, or beside the, we have the new facade where I guess the fabric part of the Ferguson used to be, but, yeah, across from Manong's is this way. So, but when we look at the original pictures of the Ferguson, those glass blocks weren't there, it was solid. So they were put in after, so, but it is history, and it has a lot to do with it. So a couple of things is, we have reached out to a historical architect and a historical contractor, and they're in great demand. So if we want to keep rehabbing that building and trying to get as much leverage with that building and money, we're going to look at, we can look at both sides. I think that would be an interesting, we will talk about that. I love that idea.
Because I know we did a lot with this, like this antelopes as a memento of being in Rawlins.
I love that.
I don't know if you could paint them or whatever, decal them or whatever, but it might be a little source of income to help the DDA and the town, and people can buy one to remember.
Yeah, that's a fantastic idea. Fantastic, love that. Speaking of putting things back that were taken out, I had a conversation about bricks the other day. Those bricks that are down at the Depot. Mike O'Brien says to me, what are all those bricks, Pam? Because he's using that Depot now. And I said, those are the bricks that need to go around the clock. And if I could find a bricklayer, and I think I finally found a bricklayer, someone that would lay bricks, there's not as many, so like, to let you guys know the story, when we redid the Depot Park and took out the fountain that was broken, there were some bricks that were purchased by people in this community that actually had names in them. There's not as many, I think there's fifteen, there were a lot of bricks, they didn't sell as many bricks. But there are bricks, and the plan is, the pedestal around when the clock was moved is where they're supposed to be. Thought, you know, when we had, you know, I talked, but I did talk to someone yesterday, and he thinks he can lay my bricks, lay the bricks for us, and get, you know, before, before splash season. So I wanted to bring that up, because that has been a few questions on, where are those bricks? We still have them, we haven't lost them. I just couldn't find a bricklayer.
Councilmembers.
I've had three or four people ask me about the lights on the poles downtown.
Yep.
We still got the ones with Christmas colors.
They're, well.
We've got a pile of them that are actually out.
So they did, they, they went from red and green to red and white for Valentine's, and then I had the high school reach out to me and ask, because it was regionals, to leave them for red and white for Outlaws. So I'm getting ready to change them, because, so they did, they actually did change after Christmas. And now I do, now that the wind has stopped kind of blowing, the contractors are ready to get up on the poles and do some investigating for me. So I did change them, but maybe people didn't realize I changed them enough.
I'd say, I know the one down here is still green.
Yeah, I can't get some of those, and you have to get up on top to change those. So the weather has not been conducive.
There is, there is, I've had several people asking about it, how come so many of them are out?
I just haven't had anybody who's wanted to get up on a ladder.
So you got Steve for it.
He was going to lay the bricks, and he was up, he was up in the Ferguson windows, and yeah, I know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right, moving down to City Manager and Staff Reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Honorable Counsel. Just a couple dates for, for Counsel. We've, we had conflicts with our preliminary budget on the second and the third of April. So we have moved those dates to Monday, April seventh, and Thursday, April tenth, that we will reconvene and go over the expenditure budget. Both nights will be at six PM. We're going to try to hold those to a couple hours each. Strategic planning that we had talked about will be sometime between Tuesday, April twenty-second, and Thursday, the twenty-fourth. If you could keep those dates open. Our plan on that is to meet at the Depot, where we can have some presentations for Counsel on the different things that we are working on. We felt it'd be easier at the, at the Depot than to constantly be changing the scene in front of the seats. So our first reading of the budget is scheduled at the regular Counsel meeting on May twentieth. We hope to have the budget book completed by then. The second reading of the budget will be at the regular Counsel meeting on June third. And then the third and final reading will be Monday, June ninth, and that'll be a special Counsel meeting that is the week of WAM in Cheyenne. So we wanted to do it Monday night before that, and usually the third and final reading is pretty quick unless we have changes to the budget. So hopefully, we can get in and out of that pretty quick. Opening day at the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course is going to be Monday, April fourteenth, for all those that are getting the itch to go golfing. And then we begin our next phase with our general ledger software update with software solutions. We've gone through like three different phases with them, and we're actually getting into the training part of that now, to where staff will be in training on the software. The reason that I bring this up to you is, we have several policies that we want to write to get before Counsel. They are dependent upon what we can do through the software. So as we learn that, Counsel will get different policies from us as far as procedure and all of those different things. So know that that is in the works on that. And that's all that I have tonight.
Thank you. City Manager Tom Sarbi. Moving down to City Attorney Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel. I have a couple of items to update Counsel. The first has to do with franchise agreements. The revenues on those was briefly touched on during City Manager's work session. The current, the city is currently in discussions, in negotiation discussions with Visionary Broadband for a franchise agreement. And franchise agreements, in summary, allow providers, in this instance telecommunications providers, but also other services like electricity and gas, to place infrastructure in the public right-ofways. Visionary, if none of you have heard of them before, they are an established telecommunications and internet provider in the Mountain West. They provide service in several places in Wyoming. I believe they might have originated in Gillette, but they also have, provide services in Colorado, Montana, and New Mexico. The city is also currently working on franchise agreement, has franchise agreements with Fat Beam and Century Link. Fat Beam currently has a fifteen-year agreement that will extend through 2029. And Century Link is currently operating on a holdover agreement. So if you're familiar with that, like landlord-tenant, if somebody stays there and you don't renew the lease, essentially, you know, goes into holdover status. So it is in a, in a holdover status right now. And we have been in contact with several representatives from Century Link to renew these, to engage in discussions, to renew those agreements. So additionally, the laws have changed in Wyoming, so the communications franchise, communications laws are governed by the FCC. And admittedly, FCC laws and regulations are a very specialized area of law. We are working with an outside Counsel on these to make sure that we comply with all federal, state, and local regulations in doing these, in negotiating and setting up these franchises. There are also very special requirements under state statute that require everybody to be treated essentially the same. So even this holdover agreement with Century Link that actually was negotiated in nineteen ninety-seven does have relevance on these 2025 negotiations. So there's a lot of complicated interplay, and that is in the works. And so because the right-ofway, I mean, the franchise agreements operate in the right-ofway, there will also need to be some updates to our municipal ordinances governing the right-ofways. In reviewing our ordinances for the right-ofways, they were last updated in nineteen seventy-nine. So this is something that is going to require some attention, and we want to make sure that they are crafted correctly to both allow business and industry use, as well as safeguard our own infrastructure and protect our own city assets, because these go in the streets and sidewalks, and knowing that we have a lot of issues with some of the, you know, with our existing city infrastructure, we want to make sure that we take all of these factors into consideration. So this is something that we have just started discussing, and we are pulling all of the relevant stakeholders, including Public Works, Community Development, and as well as taking into consideration the laws and ordinances and regulations that are also at play to make sure we craft these correctly. So that will be a work session forthcoming.
Thank you. Moving down to City Council Updates. Do you have any? Councilwoman Newman?
I do have a quick question. How is the search for HR Director going?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Newman, we have selected a candidate to bring to Rawlins. We want to make sure that they have the opportunity to see our community. We believe through the interview, it was the right fit, but we want to make sure. So they will be here next Friday, whatever that day, the twelfth? Eleventh. Eleventh of April, they will be on-site, and we will show them around the city facilities, do, you know, a follow-up interview, but that's where we're at on that, so.
Very good news.
It looks good, and, yeah, very, very good candidate.
Any other updates? Or Vice Mayor Garner?
Any update on finance?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Garner, we're not so lucky on finance. We've received a couple applications, but the requirements that we're, we're asking for just aren't there yet. So, yeah, we will continue that search.
Just one more on that. Are we, besides just not a fit for that position, is the pay, pay is not an issue with that one? Is that, we seem to be getting?
Madam Mayor and Councilman Garner, we, we have increased the pay on that to where that would be the highest-paid department head, and we still just haven't received it. But I've noticed two or three other cities throughout the state have reposted finance positions, which means that they're just not out there at this time. That's just kind of where we're at.
I heard there's a national shortage of CPAs, is that correct?
Yes, there's a lot that are happening with the CPAs. I've looked through the University of Wyoming, hoping to find just a graduate, middle-of-the-class graduate to come. They're all taken at the university. Even my own son. Even my own son in his second year in accounting is being approached by businesses, even in the second year to hurry and get through.
I may have approached him myself.
Several, several times already, you know, through accounting firms and, but I'm still hopeful. It's been two years that we've been looking, but someone's gonna wanna come to Rollins.
Look, when we were at WHAM, you had mentioned something, and it might, and I might have spoken on this, there was an accounting firm there. Were, is it possible to hire one of theirs temporary or just hire them to assist, to alleviate this on you, and then until we can find a full-time?
That is an option. The only hard thing is, is that they would be willing to do that remotely, I believe. But to have one onsite in Rollins, I think that's the hard part, with their firm and their other business, if they were to give us some, some time. We can do some things remotely. We definitely can, especially as the audit season approaches.
How much would that help you? If we could do, if the council was okay with doing a remote position like that, would it, how much could that alleviate?
Right now, where we fall short is we've got three tremendous individuals in the finance office. Actually, four, we have one that's transitioning to Public Works. Day-to-day stuff, they handle that very well. So the reconciling of the accounts and those things, that's handled very well through our staff. We don't have any issues. Where the issue comes is on the larger projects, which is the budget, the audit, the software conversion, and policy and those things. That's where it takes, you know, a lot of my time on those things. And so help on a lot of those things would, you know, through a finance director would be huge. But, but that's kinda where we're at, would be on those large projects. And the applications that we are getting can do reconciliations, they can do a lot of those things. But when it comes to the audit work and knowing generally accepted accounting principles and auditing standards, that experience just isn't there right now that within our applicants. And what they could do, I've already have staff that do it very, very well. I would, I would put my staff up against anybody in the state as far as data processing, accounts payable. It's just on those large projects, when it comes to what an accountant would know as far as auditing and the budgets, that's just where we fall short, so.
Is there, I know when we were hiring for a city manager, we used like a headhunting recruitment company. Is there anything like that that could assist in our efforts to get a?
We, we could always, always look at that. We're just a little concerned with the expense, you know, coming up empty. Because like Prothman and those are, you know, you know, they do a nationwide search.
But we have been very short in that budget for a very long time.
That's true. There is, yes, there is a salary in there that is not being used with that, that we could always look at that. And we have, and, and once we get a full-time HR director on staff, I think that'll open up a lot more avenues. Because right now, we go through the websites, the Indeed, and the monster dot com, and all those, just like the rest. But I think we can, you know, you know, once we have a professional on that understands those things, I think we can expand our search to beyond that. I don't know if it'll be one of those major headhunt firms, but I think we will be able to reach out more.
Okay. Any other updates? All right, moving down to unfinished business and an ordinance on second reading and waiving the reading of ordinance revising chapter eight point one-six of the Rollins Municipal Code. Councilmember Singer?
I move to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance revising chapter eight point one-six of the Rollins Municipal Code relating to nuisances. Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading, waive reading of the ordinance revising chapter eight point one-six of Rollins Municipal Code relating to nuisances. Do we have discussion? Councilmember Singer?
I had a suggestion asked of me that what we were trying to do is we were trying to extend the time for disposal of dead animals from twelve to forty-eight hours. Wouldn't it make more sense to have a time limit from when someone is reported having that animal? By that, I mean the.
A nuisance.
A nuisance itself. Instead of trying to fit it into an actual category, say, from, if it gets reported, you have X period of time to alleviate this problem. That was just a question asked of me, so.
I'm sorry, you're probably right.
Do you wanna revise your motion? Or what is everybody else's?
Do you want me to amend the motion?
I mean amend, sorry.
So I move to amend the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance to include a timeframe.
You mean it's a timeframe?
Yeah, but I need a timeframe. What is that timeframe?
How long does it take to?
Report of the nuisance?
Forty-eight hours. Forty-eight hours.
You change it from twelve to forty-eight?
Okay, so still forty-eight hours?
Yeah.
Okay, from the report of the nuisance. Hold on before we get too far.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Councilmember Singer, so I just wanna clarify I'm following correctly. So if we take the language and all game and animal hides, heads, carcasses, and feet must not be kept on any premises and must be disposed of a sanitary landfill, period, if nuisance reports are received, I mean, do we want it like that? Or must be disposed of at a sanitary landfill within forty-eight hours of?
The report of the nuisance.
Any reports relating to their nuisance?
Yeah, that.
Okay. And I do suggest forty-eight hours because weekends?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Daryl was the second, right?
Yeah.
Do you second that?
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Did you have anything?
No, it's just a two-part thing we have to do here. We're amending the motion, so we're voting on the amendment. And then we have to vote on the amended motion. As we're changing the motion.
No, you did a friendly amendment, so you're changing the original motion.
Okay.
That was out there, and then you amended the emotion forty-eight hours from the time of report of the nuisance, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that, as long as that passes, then that is, that would.
That will automatically amend the old motion.
Right, if that one fails, then we have, then we still have a motion on the.
Okay. Vice Mayor Garner?
The only thing, only bad part about that is, is if I have a complaint on a dog barking, I, and I know this is the same thing, but forty-eight hours later, it's finally gonna be remedied. That's, that's the only concern I have.
This was specific to the dead animal, though.
Right, no, I'm just using it as an example. So if I, if forty-eight hours of having the smell continue, the idea of reporting it is to get it taken care of right away, right? And that's the idea, to report a nuisance, like if a dog's barking or this animal's dead, I don't wanna smell it for the next twenty-four hours in my house. I like, I like the idea of we have a timeline, you got forty-eight hours after on the original motion, but my, that's just my concern, is, is that too long after a complaint to let something go?
The original intent of it is to avoid having a nuisance. And so allowing a nuisance to accumulate and then giving extra time can defeat the purpose of the original intent of it. So there's certainly that consideration. We can always add another type of ordinance in between that. But we already have, there are already ordinances relating to smells. And this goes to that. So this is to mitigate, this is the guidance that you gotta get this out of there before it turns into a nuisance.
Got it. Councilmember Elliott, did you have something?
I do not.
Oh, I saw your, I thought I saw your hand up, okay. Councilmember Garner?
I'd like to retract my friendly second for the change on this, if I can.
Okay, so that means we go back to our original motion?
Correct. If we don't get another, if you don't get a second.
We have a?
You don't get another second.
I thought that he has to.
He just said he retracted his second.
Okay, so then it's open to anybody.
Right now, it's open to anybody. If you don't second it, it automatically dies.
Councilmember Patterson?
So what, we've gone a long ways around here, round about a couple of times already. So what I'm hearing is the retraction is for
I change.
just the amount of time after the complaint. So if somebody complains, then they've got forty-eight hours.
According to his amendment.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So I don't understand why the second was pulled, I'm not.
Because he doesn't want that timeframe, right? He friendly amended, he doesn't want that timeframe, so he's pulling his second. That means we're back to where we were, if somebody seconds it, we'll be back to, we'll be back to having this discussion again. But if nobody seconds it, it automatically dies. And then we go back to this.
Vice Mayor Garner?
I can explain why I pulled it. Because right after I did the second, I was looking, I was thinking about it, and I thought, well, that's kind of a strange way to do a nuisance, is to allow another forty-eight hours of the nuisance. And I just kinda got ahead of myself on the second.
Councilmember Seela?
There's a couple of problems there. One, a lot of times, they're not gonna know it's even there until it's a nuisance. That's, it stinks. It's the only time there, the cops are gonna be called, you know, that it's there. So it could've been there a week before that, but you're taking the forty-eight hours from the time it was put there, killed or put there, on the trust of the people that they're gonna do that. How many people's gonna do that? You know, what I'm saying, it's this way, you got so long time, it's gotta be cleared. I understand where you're talking about smell, yes, but, I mean.
Councilmember Lumen?
Okay. So if we leave it the way it is, and the cops are called because of the smell, they do their research, they find out it was killed five days ago or however long ago, they automatically get a ticket, right? The way it's written now.
Well, they're discretion, but.
But if we change it to the amendment, then when they get the call that this is a nuisance, then they have forty-eight hours, especially if it's a weekend, but they have forty hours to dispose of that, get rid of it, and then they would get the ticket, if they didn't do anything with it. Am I understanding that correctly?
Except for the, the police have discretion in that.
Right, they can choose not to, if it's not amended, they can choose not to.
So does anybody want to second? Council, oh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a little additional consideration on subsection twenty, which is the citations. In it, we have included, you know, what a citation includes. There's an, because of the way we crafted these, subsection B grants an automatic grace period of ten days. Subsection C grants certain, certain ordinance violations, particularly it was a snow and ice removal, that need to be immediately removed if requested. This may be the best place to put that allows discretion and to recraft the language under subsection C to allow a citation to, you know, if pursuant to the discretion of an officer, a citation requires immediate abatement, this is where it gives them that additional discretion, because if it could be, you know, is it harboring really stinky offensive smells? Is it harboring insects and rodents that, or who knows what else? That it might need to be immediately abated because these conditions have been accumulating for far too long.
Does this one current, would this, under the current one right here, would this fall under the ten-day grace period?
So B, B, so this entire section, so with A is the citation, what it needs to entail, B, subsection B provides that ten-day grace period, so it's the fix-it portion. But C is where we can add, not just for ice and snow, but for discretion to the code enforcement officer. And this allows that flexibility. And there can also be currently only ice removal, snow and ice removal is required to be immediately abated. But we can, I can expand this to be at the discretion of the officer.
So, so what you're saying there, can we put that in there, that the code enforcement has the right, officer has the right to his discretion to have it removed immediately if it needs to be because of safety reasons?
Health, safety, or?
Yeah, health and safety reasons, stuff like that.
Okay, so we're back to his amendment. Anybody second, seconding that? Okay, so that fails.
So what do we gotta do to change all this around?
Okay.
So you're just back to the original amendment?
Okay, so somebody else could make a motion to?
I just wanna ask a quick question. The way it is now, if there's a nuisance, it's up to the officer's discretion or to give them up to ten days to get rid of it or not? Or is it the forty-eight hours?
Well, that's the guns to, you gotta get rid of it within forty-eight hours. And this does, you know, in going through this, this showcases the benefit of talking through these, because we've, we found a gap in applications. So right now, it would technically fall under the ten days.
With the discretion.
Yeah.
So the forty-eight hours is a
It's like, hey.
guideline for the officer, but he has up.
No, not for the officer, for people who have head hides and carcasses.
But the ticket could be, if you don't get rid of it in ten days.
Essentially, technically, under the citation, you get ten days.
So can I make a friendly motion that it's written in there that they've got twenty-four hours after painting the carcass to dispose of it unless the code enforcement officer sees it up there being able to, wanting to have it go away immediately because of safety reasons? I don't know how you wanna state all that, how you state all that.
I thought you had it right. Can you say the wording again to this part about the discretion that we would need to add?
Yes, so if we keep it as it is, and it's forty-eight hours, that's the guidance, but we modify, it's rather than modifying one hundred, which is about the dead animals, we modify two hundred, which is where we are, two hundred C, to. we modify two hundred, which is where we are, two hundred C, to expand it to allow nuisance officers discretion to require immediate abatement of nuisances that...
Can you just stop right there? Nuisance?
To nuisances.
Because you don't have to clarify beyond that?
No.
You're giving them that possibility right then and there. It could be a pole falling down on your property. It could be anything, where they can say right then and there, this has to stop now.
Counselwoman Lumen?
I wanna amend to exactly what she said.
Did you get that?
Can we change that other section in there, and that part of our section, we're changing right now?
No, it would, it would be automatic into hundred C.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Attorney Mayor, you can help.
So I just need to know how this amendment is going to...
I think it needs to be seconded first, or approved by you two? If it's an amendment?
No, we're back to the original approval of the second reading, which was me.
Right.
We're there. What, what you're talking about with her is not this.
Okay.
That's a different amendment that we would have to make to that portion of two hundred C, which is not this.
That's a different deal, though.
Entirely different. We just have to do this one.
But it's still the ordinance. That section is still in this one?
No. This is, it's just, no.
Okay.
No, we're okay. We're doing one hundred, that's in two hundred. That's not this.
Okay. So is everybody clear where we're at?
Yeah, so we're, we're back to the original motion to approve the second reading, waive the reading of the ordinance, revising chapter eight point one six of Rollins Municipal Code relating to nuisances. It's been seconded, we've already done that, all we have to do is vote on that, and then we can come back to adjusting two hundred C.
Right, directly after this?
You, you can do it as an action item right away by just amending the, the agenda.
So this says revising chapter eight point one six.
One six point one hundred.
But that's not what the recommended action says?
Eight point one six for the whole thing.
You have to read the motion, the original motion is for the revised chapter eight point one six.
It's the whole, whole chapter. So two hundred is a part of that.
We're doing a revision on.
So are you gonna revise that other part?
Subsection C of two hundred, yes.
Okay.
Can we put that in a motion? I'll second it.
Hold on.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to move to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance revising chapter eight point one six of the Rollins Municipal Code relating to nuisances. Okay? And that is what is on the floor right now, all right? So we'll either have to vote on this, because we have a first and a second, or if you want an amendment, then you have to do an amendment. Or you could vote on this, and you could have it all fail, you could do whatever you'd like, Madam Mayor. How do you wanna do this?
What would be cleanest?
Cleanest would be to modify the current motion to include the modification to subsection, to section eight sixteen, two hundred C, to allow, to expand to allow the nuisance officer discretion to require immediate abatement of nuisances.
Okay, was that your amendment?
That's my amendment, yes, to the original motion.
Do I have a second to the amendment? Okay. I'll give Lynn a minute.
Go.
Hold on. Any discussion while Lynn is typing? Sorry, that got really convoluted quickly.
I don't think it's still clear.
So we're, we're gonna move and approve the second reading and waiving the reading of the ordinance revising chapter six point one eight of the Rollins Municipal Code relating to nuisances, and then we are changing, correct?
We're modifying...
We're modifying section eight sixteen, two hundred. Wait a minute, eight, oops. Eight sixteen point two hundred.
C.
C.
This is actually better, this is actually better than this one, because that way they can just animals, it's everything.
It's gonna take me a moment to craft it.
To read, or to...
Um, to, to expand discretion to nuisance officers.
Speedy.
Sorry, the wording probably keeps changing.
Yes.
Because it's not an exact wording, it still needs to have some...
Flair.
Flair.
I never thought a legal use is flair, but, okay.
And a discretion. So, the first was Counselmember Lumen?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Second?
Counselmember Seale. Can you read it back for us, Lynn?
All right, the motion is amended to read, move to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance revising chapter eight point one six of the Rollins Municipal Code relating to nuisances, modifying eight point one six point two zero zero, section C, to expand the discretion of the nuisance officer to require immediate abatement of nuisances.
Great.
Is that correct?
That is, yes.
Any other discussion? All right, Lynn, when you're ready, please open online voting.
Do we need to refresh this?
Yeah, you'll have to refresh.
You have to refresh, yes. Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
Great, moving down to new business, the first one is to approve a twenty-four-hour catering pit permit. Counselwoman Lumen?
Move to approve a twenty-four-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc., DBA Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number ninety-one, to cater dueling, pianos, roadshow event at the Parko Sinclair Theater at the town of Sinclair, Wyoming on Saturday, April fifth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P.M.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve a twenty-four-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc., doing business with Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number ninety-one. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, when you're ready, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to the approval of a warning of one new breathing air compressor. Counselmember Singer?
I move to award the new breathing air compressor fill station and air storage bid to Ellen Curtis and Sons, Salt Lake City, Utah. Option number one, with the reel, hose reel totaling seventy-five thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to award the new breathing air compressor fill station and air storage bid. And Ellen, would you like to speak?
Madam Mayor, and after the last discussion, I don't know if I wanna be up here, no. So I can answer some questions and those kinds of things. It's a breathing air compressor, they're all, have their own little tweaks and those kind of things, so.
Counselwoman Lumen?
Yes.
This money was set aside specifically for this, or...
Yes, this is a budgeted capid wire.
Okay, thank you.
Counselmember Patterson?
Is this just your compressor, or is it the fill station also?
It's the, the compressor and the fill station, it's the whole one.
You're replacing everything.
Yeah, it's replacing the current one we have that's...
Is it also a three-bottle filler?
So we can fill three bottles at a time, there will be four bottles of storage currently, we only have three, which will help a little bit as far as just after a large incident, to be able to fill bottles a little faster and those kinds of things, just has to, storage. Yeah, the current compressor was there when I started in ninety-nine, so it's old.
Second, we use it as a backup, or do you have a backup, just in case?
Right now, I only have one machine. There would, we would replace the one we currently have. It would be one of those things, if we had a catastrophic failure or something, those kind of things. County Fire does have one that we can use, those kind of things, so. It's, yeah, we've dealt with one for my entire career so far, so.
All right, any further questions? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas and one abstain, the one abstain was Counselmember Patterson.
Thank you, Captain. All right, moving down to the approval of a warning and metal purchase bid for the city of Rollins, Wyoming landfill. Counselmember Singer?
I move to award the metal purchase bid for the city of Rollins landfill to Western Metal Recycle of Plymouth, Utah, effective until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Western Metal Recycle will be purchasing the city of Rollins, Wyoming landfill scrap steel at one hundred and twelve dollars and forty-two cents per ton.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to award the metal purchase bid to the city of Rollins landfill. Any discussion?
No, just, we looked into all three of them, all three of them are very reputable businesses, and it just really came down to the price point, so we would recommend that.
Is this the same one we've always had?
No, the one that we used to use, I believe, was Pacific.
Counselmember Singer?
That, that's a rather large discrepancy between the top number and the next two numbers down.
They're a very large metal buyer out of Utah, so in looking into their background, we found that they are a very large business, so.
All right, any for Counselmember Lumen?
The Lawrence property, extra metal, is that kinda...
That is something that me and Tom are gonna be working on very soon.
Okay, but the metal more than likely will go here to be recycled, that we can't sell out.
As far, as far as the Lawrence property, or is that what you're talking, well, we would like to try to structure that to where it's its own project, and they get rid of everything on that property, and we don't have to intermix the two, so.
You might be interested in that as well?
Yeah, well, we've already had some of these companies say that they're very interested in that project.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to the approval of one voting delegate and one alternative delegate to attend the annual business meeting for the Wyoming Association of Rural Water Systems Conference on April eighteenth. Do I have a motion?
We have to discuss first, because we don't have names.
Yeah, we're not supposed to discuss before the motions on the table.
Okay.
Can you tell us who's attending, though, Tom?
The conference?
Yeah.
Who will be attending?
Yes.
So, okay, so this is an annual conference, awards conference, and our member here at the city is Stevie Osborne, so we're, staff's recommendation would be to have Stevie be our voting delegate, and Bud Dimick to be our alternative.
Okay. Do I have a... Counselmember Garner?
I move to approve Stevie Osborne as a voting delegate to represent the city of Rollins, Wyoming, Wyoming Association of Rural, oh my gosh, Rural Water Systems Annual Meeting on Friday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, in Casper, Wyoming.
Second. All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve Stevie Osborne as the voting delegate to represent the city of Rollins at the Worms, Worms Annual Meeting on Friday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, in Casper. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, do I hear a second motion? Counselwoman Lumen?
Move to approve...
Stevie Osborne?
Oh, no, second.
Oh, Bud Dimick. Bud Dimick?
Bud Dimick, as an alternative voting delegate to represent the city of Rollins, Wyoming, at the Wyoming Association of Rural Water Systems Annual Meeting on Friday, April eighteen, twenty twenty-five, in Casper, Wyoming.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and the second to approve Bud Dimick as the alternate voting delegate to represent the city of Rollins, Wyoming, at the Wyoming Association of Rural Water Systems Annual Meeting on Friday, April eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion on that? All right, Lynn, can you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
You got me. All right, moving down to a resolution authorizing the amendment of the city of Rollins fee schedules. Counselmember Singer?
I move to accept the resolution amending municipal fee schedules, administrative fees A, and recreation service fees, golf course only, appendix E, effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to accept the resolution amending municipal fee schedules, administrative fees A, and recreation services fees, golf course only, appendix E, effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Does she wanna explain?
Yeah, Nikki, would you like to explain?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Just briefly, I, Tom and I worked a lot on these fees. Basically, understanding the current budget situations with the golf course, we did kind of dive deep into what I could only say is like a SWOT analysis, so our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, that's basically what we did. The, in the short, I, we wanna increase our target market, we really wanna start a new marketing campaign, and really focus on some of the strengths that we have, marketing-wise. Obviously, some of our biggest threats are our membership, and that's where this comes into play. So I think Tom can go over a little bit more of the budget portion of that, and what we're looking at there.
Madam Mayor, Council, with the golf course opening on the fourteenth, we just wanna get the increased rates out now. If we waited for a, a later meeting, we would have the rates, the old rates, and then it would change midstream. So the purpose that we're bringing the golf course alone, without all the other rates, is just for that purpose. is just for that purpose. The second purpose of what we did is as the funds grow tighter within the general fund, it's getting harder to find resources, basically for anything, let alone for, you know, recreation and those types of things. So we, we did take a dive into here, and we set expectations for the amount of memberships, green fees, so that we can increase our revenue. We feel a staff that we, we need to make the golf course a little more justifiable to the general fund. And so we, we've, we've made some restructuring within the city itself, we've moved some departments, one of those is going to be the Parks Department to Public Works, which will free up our Recreation Director to focus on marketing campaigns, revenue generation. And so the projections here are aggressive, we understand that, but we feel this is where we need to go to make the golf course justify itself, you know, to where, right now, more and more funds are having to be transferred each year from the general fund over to there. So that's, that's what you have before you. One of the obvious changes in here is that we'd like to offer a one-month single membership that has not been offered before previously at a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We feel that that would allow individuals, like with the Sinclair turnaround and those different things that are here for a month, to be able to have a one-month membership. We feel that that would increase. Senior memberships will increase in here, and then some of the charter memberships, we, we also have increasing slightly, but the main purpose of this tonight is just to get the rate fees set before the golf course opens.
Okay, Councilmember Sanger?
So what's the anticipated increase in revenue from these changes? What are we looking at here that it's going to create?
So the one, one-month membership, we believe we could sell twenty of those, which would be twenty-five hundred just on that alone. And then the, the rest of the proposed changes we have will, will have to come through a marketing plan that will be devised. But that's where we're at right now with it. So we've set the expectations, and we, we will be, be looking at some membership drives to, to, you know, bring people in through membership drives. And we feel through this report that you have tonight, that there are certain target markets that are not being marketed appropriately. When we look at the national averages, seniors golf twice as much as the average. So the average rounds per year in there, I believe, were like at eighteen, and seniors do like an average of thirty-six rounds. And our senior population that we sell memberships to, as well as green fees, is, is very low. And, and we feel that that's one area that we need to target more, is to get more seniors out to the golf course. The other area in here is the youth. We need to get more youth out. Our greens fees, memberships, numbers for youth are, are very low. We need to in, in, increase that through marketing efforts. And if you look at family memberships, the only family memberships are under the charter, which means that we haven't sold family memberships under the, the regular. And, and, and we feel that through targeting that, that market, that we should be able to increase our sales through that.
Sorry, can I jump in a few seconds? That, that one-month membership, the exciting thing about it is, one, there's nowhere else that offers that. It's kind of a, it's going to be a Rawlins thing. But that one-month membership is just their green fees. So with that, I do think that we're going to see a huge increase in those one-month memberships, but each of, each time they go out, so say, the one-twenty-five actually would only cover three rounds of golf, but each of those times that they go out, the twenty-seven other days of the month, they have to buy cart fees, they're going to buy ranged balls, they're going to spend money in the pro shop, they might need golf balls because you lose them a lot out there. And with those snakes, you don't want to go out and get them. So I do think that we're not just going to see that increase in those one-month memberships, we're going to see a big increase in those cart rentals and, and the additional exposure out there. I think it's going to be big.
Councilmember Elliott?
If you would go down to the charter membership, senior? It's been increased quite a bit. Are there any fears of losing memberships right there?
Nope, I've talked to Kevin about it several times, and he feels with the membership that we have currently, that that's, that's sustainable.
Okay.
When was the last time those were raised, those were raised, the charter membership?
I do believe we did a small increase last year.
When year ago?
Small increase.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to item F, a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five municipal budget. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five municipal budget for expenditures from general ca, general fund cash reserves of two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, sixth penny cash reserves of four million dollars, enterprise cash reserves of a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, eight forty-four, and enterprise fund CDVG grant of eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars totaling five million, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-tonight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, the motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, and City Manager Sarkey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So the budget amendment tonight stems from the adoption of the salary schedule at our last meeting. We wanted that to go into effect at that time, so to finish out the fiscal year, we would have higher salaries than what is included in the budget. So that is what was driving that. Overall, the salary schedule, the, the increase in that was approximately a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, and we have seven pay periods left within this year, which is roughly twenty-six point nine-two percent of the year. So on the salaries themselves, it was about forty-six thousand, which would do that. We had the removal of the eighty-six hour rule, and again, at the twenty-six percent for the remaining periods was about twenty-two thousand, eight hundred. And then we had some items that came up throughout the year before council that we just kind of put on a list that we needed to amend. First off is police vehicles. We had vehicles come in that we ordered three years ago, and we did not get those within the, the budget last year. Somewhere over the last three years, they got dropped off, and when they came in, we thought, oh, we don't have them in the budget. So there's a hundred-and-thirty thousand police vehicles. We had a office building donated to the city from Black Hills Power, and we need to move that to the location, and we estimated seventy-five thousand for, for both the, the physical move of the building and the concrete foundation that we discussed. About a month ago, we talked about the river pump station with those pumps that needed to be replaced, so we had a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for that. And then we've had work performed on our SCADA system that came through a federal grant through the Community Development Block Grant. We did not have those details in the, when, when we adopted the, the budget last year, which we do now, so we're asking to put, put those in the budget. We were not sure on our sixth penny funds last year where we were going to spend those, or if we were able to spend those. So we have the Edinburgh Project that will start this spring, so we've asked for half of that to be put in the, the budget. We, we feel by June thirtieth, we, we will, will not have expended over half that project, so we put it at four million, so that it will cover what we had there, and, and those are the items that we are asking council tonight to amend the budget for.
Any questions? Councilmember Elliott?
The police cars that are stored, the old ones that are on, either it's Daly or Murray, I believe it's Daly Street, are those going to be sold?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Elliott, we, we, we have those to be repaired. Those are ones that throughout the course of duty were damaged.
Oh.
And so they are sitting there needing repairs. Our biggest issue now is that we are seven officers short, and we ordered these three years ago. So as we get officers in, we, we will look at repairing those, those older ones. We, we just have no need for them right now, so where they're damaged state, we, they're just there. But, but these were ordered three years ago.
Okay.
And to be honest, when, when we put their report together, they were so long, we forgot that they were there.
Okay.
So when they came in, we thought, we need to amend the budget.
Any other questions? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Sorry, it is open now. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
Okay, moving down to item ten, an executive session. Do I, Councilwoman Lewin?
Move to enter into executive session at eight fifty-nine P M. per Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, A, nine, and three, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law on matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is a party, or proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Circuit.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to enter into executive session. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
Come on, Maurice, let's go get the towel.
Yeah, I.
He turns off the radio.
Oh, really? So what's that one?
On the hard sheet of the paper. We all got to do that, but. Yes. You can't beat him. Yes. I did, it never got picked up? I did. I don't know if they do bags of the bottom. Maybe he can't get it out. I'll get to the process. We will. Lucy? Steve? Is it Steve? No. Oh, sorry. Tom. But he's having issues with his. Any one of us? I'm sorry. You called last week. We will. I will have them. The bag from the bottom. Better maybe tell them something. All right. We could. We'll have a quick session. Let me get what your God tell you. Guess. Good. Are you back already?
Yeah. We're marking out a manual for it.
Yes, I do.
Where is everybody else?
They're, you know, doing their thing.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to take a restroom break. After, after the tour of the city facility. Also, I think you could call the. You said it? Yeah. Where's? Yep. Soon as I said, I'm like, yeah. I'll take those. Put them in the vacuum truck for future use. Which also has some propane. It's a methane. Couple of them. Who's that?
Six twenty-seven was the state. They also have abandoned W two's.
You guys?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool. You guys use drawers and lights?
Yeah.
What does that think? Seventy?
Seventy-eight.
Where are we talking to?
Let's take down station two.
Do you guys do that field?
Yeah. It's in the north.
Yeah.
That's a shiny light over there on the west street. It's kind of long. Because what they do for a bomb is all.
So is there an oxygen tank connected somewhere?
No, it just takes air. That's all that's in our balls. It's just great to breathe just air. So it compresses it six thousand P S I.
So it doesn't like magnify the oxygen?
So all of our SCBA's are self-integrated and airbrushed. Even the scuba things, the one on the different train yards and everything, they're your own water. Which also works same. It's just a compressor. There's no actual exhaust.
So it's just an air forcer?
No. Oxygen in and out. All blue, one hundred forty-five hundred.
Do they ever blow up? I've never.
There's been accidents with them, those kind of things, but they're pretty.
Is it usually like a motion or?
Yeah. You most of any problem we've ever had, only the one we had catched off, is the valve that's on.
The valve?
It started with a little bit. If you should grab it on a curricular, when you're buried in that.
Yeah.
Which you can't hold them fast enough. Far enough to make it actually like straighten everything. It's just a good... You give it a lot of jerks a lot, you know, you can't stand to be very next to it.
Do you have a shirt on? Do you have a, do you have a shirt that's wearing some on? I have a shirt. All right.
Do you need more mints? Do I need to buy more mints?
No.
I would twirl.
Take one.
No, um. Um, council member Patterson, the whole lunch.
Oh, okay. Let me know when you start running low.
And I have plenty of water right now, so thank you.
Hello. All right. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session? Uh, council member Patterson?
Move to come out of executive session for amendment statute fourteen dash four dash four zero five. A nine plus three at nine thirty-four.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to come out of executive session. Do I have any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Lim, will you open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas and one abstain. The one abstain was Vice Mayor Gordon.
Do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes? Council member Singer.
Move to approve the executive session minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve this executive session minutes of March fourth. Any discussion? All right, Lim, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas and one abstain. The one abstain was Vice Mayor Gordon.
Were there any objections to matters discussed in executive session? Okay, seeing that there were none, we will, um, adjourn this meeting at nine thirty-five P M. We will have our next meeting at April seventh, twenty twenty-five, special city councils meeting, starting at six P M. Tom?
That was in your mailbox. I don't know who brought it.
Which one is that? Oh, yeah, I could tell. I put it in there.
Oh, oh, I didn't see. I just.
My, well, my sister did. I got sick, but it's from.
Green Book.
It's a, an idea he'd like to talk to the council about. So.
I just didn't know where it was and nobody discussed about it.
There is a disgust. We just got the flyer on.